So that's my point was it's gonna take. See, I got some, if we get to that point, then I will pass out my sort of kind of emotions.
Had you.
The batteries are running out.
Did you do anything specific?
Uh huh.
What's gonna get interesting is if we just get ten minutes of cooks in the kitchen with ten million little suggestions.
What sorts of...
We'll get started without any...
I assume he's coming, but I will tell you that today I sent him, he sent me an email about an unrelated, a central related thing like the instrument we thank for. And then I sent him emails and regards to, he sent this on his way. So he's come up, but he never answered me because I was trying to make sure that I run all the bases in whatever staff direction we give him or something.
I heard that he's having his neck surgery tomorrow.
What?
I heard he's having his neck surgery tomorrow.
Instead of the fifteenth?
Oh, I don't know. I heard this.
Let me know when you're ready.
But maybe...
He's always told me that it's on Monday the fifteenth, his last day in his office. I mean, it's Friday now. Is it possible things got moved up? I mean, I know he's been in his office over the weekend working, trying to get ready because he's gonna be down for two or three weeks.
And, and it's also possible that somebody gave me the wrong thing.
As far as I know, it's, it's next Monday. Daughter goes back to school that day.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. See, you still have it. It's something in, I think it's something in my house. Because once I got to the range this afternoon, I teach till three o'clock. Once I got to the range, I kind of stopped sneezing. And I haven't been bad since I've been back.
You lied. I kind of thought maybe it was coming.
We're ready.
But, you know, it's one of those things that...
Being five thirty-one, I'll now call to order the regular meeting of Lake Placid Town Council this eighth day of August twenty twenty-two in the government center in the town, great town of Lake Placid. I would ask all of you to make sure your phones are either off or on vibrate. And at, at this time, we have the honor to have with us Keith Carringer from Highlands Baptist Church, who is going to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Everybody would please remove your covers.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything you've given us. Lord, we thank you for Lake Placid and the leaders that you have appointed. We ask that you please protect our leaders, Lord, our, our council members that you've sat here, and all of those who play a part in making the important decisions. Lord, to lead our town in the way that it should go, please protect them, bless them, put a hedge of protection around their homes and their families. Father, I pray that you please bless this meeting tonight. Give your wisdom and your guidance and your spirit so that all that is said and done can glorify you and can better our town. We thank you for everything, and Jesus stay in we pray. Amen.
Amen. Don't you plead just? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for being here. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay. Under consent agenda one, we have A through E.
Move to approve consent agenda one, A through E.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, I'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. There is no agenda two, so we'll go to three. First on the agenda is buffer requirements for four eighty-four Sunset Point Drive. Good evening.
Good evening, Melanie Culpepper, town planner for the record. I am just, I just did the agenda item, so I assumed that the applicant would come up to the podium and speak on it. Go ahead. Yep, right up there. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I am Robert Daley. I'm here with my wife Catherine. And we need your help in order to build a single hem, family home on our lakefront lot. I asked that some items be distributed to the council prior to coming here, which I hope you have in front of you. But in summary, there are requirements from the town that are in excess of what's required by the state in terms of a buffer. The town requires a seventy-five foot buffer and the state requires a twenty-five foot buffer. This leaves us very limited options in where and what type of home we can put on this lot. I would like to make it very clear, we are not asking for compromising any wetlands whatsoever. Part of our lot is wetlands. We're strictly asking that the buffer requirement of the town of Lake Placid, which is seventy-five feet, be waived so that we can conform to the state requirements of twenty-five feet. We believe this is a very reasonable request, and hopefully you do too. If I may, I'd like to walk through the exhibits. Do you, do you have maps in front of you? I've numbered them. Number one is strictly an overview of what, the, the location, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with, so you can quickly go through that. Number two, this is to show that a good chunk of our property, which is outlined in blue, is wetlands. The four acres immediately to the west have been designated a preserve area. And then I just wanted to note that immediately to the west of that, there is a home on that lot. Exhibit number three is strictly more of the same. This just has, for your information, the perimeter dimensions of the lot. Now, what I'd like to concentrate on are the next few exhibits. Number four, this is a survey by one of the local surveyors here, which shows the potential area to build a single family home, given the restrictions by the state of Florida, which is a twenty-five foot buffer. It shows that there are about thirteen thousand square feet of permissible space. We do not want to build a thirteen thousand square foot home. We just want to have the option of being able to locate it within that zone. If you kindly turn to number five, this is the space that results with the town's requirements. This is about forty-nine hundred square feet of permissible building space. The, this for reference, the, the wet lines, line is the orange line, dotted line. The twenty-five foot buffer is the purple line on the west side of the property. And then you see the permissible building space in the checkered area. And while forty-nine hundred square feet is a reasonable amount of space to build a home, this is a very awkward plot. And while not impossible to build a home there, it would not conform to the other community, the homes in the community, and basically end up with a shotgun home with a hall down the middle and rooms on both sides. So if you, if you kindly turn to number six, realistically, this is the lot with the permissible space, given a typical rectangular footprint of a home. It eliminates the jutting areas on, on either end. Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to approve a wetland buffer of twenty-five feet to allow the construction of a single family dwelling at four eighty-four Sunset Point Drive. There's no point, I, I don't see reason for you to continue.
Second.
We got a motion to second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none. The audience? All right, bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Okay. Lake Placid Farmers Market.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Terella, and I am the man, I run the farmers market for Lake Placid. Four years ago, my husband and I were approached to take on the Lake Placid Farmers Market. We had a vision for it and knew in order to accomplish it, we would need to be able to bring together, establish vendors, reach out to the community, and you, and bring in the brick and mortar businesses as well. We needed to get them all to see what it could be and take a chance on it with us. Although it seemed like an uphill battle many days, we feel together we have created something pretty special for the community. Although my company, New Paradigm Real Estate, bears the responsibility in financial and logistics, I know it couldn't have become what it is today without the collaboration of everyone. When the new construction was set to be done at the Journal Plaza, we learned that we would have to be left with very little area, and we would have to do something to evolve the market. I've submitted a request to close down a portion of North Main Avenue between Dal Hall and North Bellevue. We would need to close it each Saturday to accommodate the farmers market and expanding it. This area, I believe, would be most beneficial to all of us, including the vendors and the businesses, as well as creating a, a larger space for the community to join us. The proper, or the street will need to close from seven AM to two thirty, giving us time to get the vendors in and get them out. Because the mi, market currently runs from eight AM to one thirty. We do have the market every Saturday. It goes from mid-October to the end of April, so it would be about twenty-nine weeks that we would be doing this. I have talked to the, the county engineer, and he expressed that I needed to come through Lake Placid and get the permission from you all to shut down the street. In cooperation with all the vendors and the businesses that are here that are supporting us, I'd like to request the shutdown of the North Main Street for the farmers market.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I'm, I'm prepared to offer a motion, and then that maybe it'll prompt more discussion, but at least it'll give us a direction to work off of. And since it's somewhat involved, we've got copies, so if everyone will, I mean, all the council members and staff will take two off the top and pass it down. So... So, my motion, in support of and at the request of the members of the Lake Placid business community, I move that the town administrator inform the county engineer that the Lake Placid Town Council does not object to the petition to close one block of, the northernmost block of Main Avenue from Dal Hall Boulevard South to Bellevue. That the town council hereby directs the town staff to work with the organizing entity of the Lake Placid Farmers Market in expedited manner to further their application to the county engineer for the weekly closure of the north block of Main Avenue. A county-maintained roadway in the town of Lake Placid for the purpose of providing a venue for a Saturday farmers market for the dates and times specified in the application. The town will cooperate with the reasonable terms and conditions of the county road closure permit and agreement. That the town staff prepare an agreement or permit addressing the following matters. Provide that the town of Lake Placid is held harmless for liability to the greatest extent possible. Require reasonable liability insurance. Require the applicant to pay all town costs associated with the farmers market, including costs of all town departments, including without limitation, traffic maintenance, signage, cleanup, law enforcement, or other staffing. Provide a well-defined list of obligations and responsibilities of the farmers market organizing entity, Highlands County, and the town of Lake Placid. Provide that the town or county may discontinue the permit act agreement either temporarily or in full at will. That this matter come back to town council at our next regular meeting for approval of the foregoing permit or agreement as proposed by staff in Highlands County, and that the farmers market will take place only after the county road closing permit or agreement and all of its requirements, as well as the town's permit or agreement, all of its requirements have been fully issued. In short, for the public, and I've met with Teresa and others, this is a little complex since we're dealing with county-owned and maintained right away that only they can close. Also, it's important that we're probably going to have staff that's going to be responsible for doing the actual closure, and that cannot be left up to a pu, member of the public to do. And so I think it's important that we ask our staff, and we use the word in an expedited manner on purpose, to get with the applicant, Teresa's organization, and work through this in probably a three-way agreement between the town of Lake Placid, Highlands County, and the farmers market people. So that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion to second, and I'll open, open it up to the podium.
The length of time gives me heartburn. I think the ability to terminate is good, and that's in there, so that comforts me there.
And the intent of the termination clause would be that, and we hope it all works, and it works well for the county, the town, and the organizers, and the vendors that are, are, that are requesting it happens, the vendors and, and the surrounding brick and mortar businesses that are asking that it happen. But we don't know, there could be anything from weather to concerns, to traffic concerns, to perhaps an entity not fulfilling their obligations, and we just need to protect our ability that for whatever reason it is not working as proposed, that we, we can end it.
Should we also suggest that the county be named since it's a county road for insurance purposes?
Well, I'm, I'm working, it's fully my intent that our staff, including legal, will make sure that in the permit agreement, that all the appropriate entities are doing what follow, falls under their jurisdiction, because I perceive that there's gonna be, the county's gonna cr, close a road right away. We're gonna close, we're gonna close right away that we kind of control and maintain, and that all parties are probably going to have to be named insured or whatever on that agreement. Obviously, leave that to Mr. Harris or others to, to, to go more detail. But I am sure the county will want to protect their interest. I know we're gonna want to protect our interests, and I'm sure the farmers market folks are gonna want to protect their interests. I also, I also perceive, and I use that word intentionally, that, that the town will incur some cost in carrying this out. And that somebody's gonna have to go every Saturday morning and get a trailer full of stuff and drive it down there and set it up across the road and ensure it's done in a manner that protects the public and the vendors. And then at or about two thirty, someone from the town's gonna have to go back there and load all that stuff back up on a trailer and take it back to the town barn. And I, I don't think that that's something that the town should, should bear that expense. That's just something they're gonna have to work into their business plan that they cover that. I don't know that there will be, there may be some additional signage or barricades that need to be purchased or made or whatever. But I, I'm, at least for me, I'm happy to be supportive of their efforts and those of the business community. But I do want to protect the interests of the town of Lake Placid. Yeah, I, I, personally, I think this could be a, a good thing for our community. There's probably gonna be growing pains, we know that. But there are a lot of, a lot of towns and cities in Florida that do this. Mount Dora comes to mind as one of the big ones. And, you know, so I just encourage everyone to, if this passes, to, let's work together. Try to make it work for our community, and just hopefully make everybody happy. Okay? Any other comments? From the audience? Bring it back, pull the council, please.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. At this two, at this time, I have a citizen's request to speak, and the American Legion. So I'll ask you to come to the podium at this time.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me part of your time this evening. I am Fred Pierce, commanding the American Legion, Pulp Twenty-Five, in this great town of Lake Placid. I came before you in March, I believe, concerning our new sign, which has been incredibly well-received throughout the community. The older, I mean, our, our population, our legions, the average age is about seventy-eight, and they can read the sign, so that's a good thing. In the last minute, it said stood to be a rolling sign, and our sign doesn't roll. It has four different messages on it for entertainment for the week. And they don't scroll, they don't flash, it'll, it'll say something, and then that'll go away, and then more words come up to introduce this Wednesday night or the Friday night setup. And it sets for ten seconds. It can set up, it can set up any time the council so deems. It can set up for two to three minutes per thing. It doesn't matter. We can program that thing. The verbiage on the sign has really only changed every Monday. That lets people know that Wednesday and Friday and Sunday nights, what entertainment they're gonna be able to come and see. We use very large letters. Like, like I said, our clientele is a little old, so they like to read. And I use contrasting colors, so it picks up quick and easy to read coming down the road. You don't have to stare at it for a very long time. It only benefits us. It benefits, every year, we do an annual Lake Placid Fun Day. And even with the rain this past Fourth of July, our attendance is up twenty percent the year before, and that was based on a lot of people that read it on the sign. We do a great thing where we have a huge water slide and face painting for the kids, and dunking booths and music, and we have free barbecue. And another thing we also do is this fall, we're a voting station. If we put it up there, people can know that we're actually a voting station as well. I've contacted Hathaway. I'm gonna negotiate with Hathaway Tree Service right now to remove the memorial trees from the front of the sign and move them to our south side of our parking lot, so it's even more visible and not anywhere near, take the, the little bit of distraction away. I did have a visit, all that being said, I had a visit from Josh from the Code Enforcement of Branson Lake Placid Police Department, nice kid. Thought the sign looked great, but he wasn't sure it met the council's standards because of the word "rolling." He did say that all he really needs to make all that go away is if the council, in their discussion this evening, and it ends up in the minutes that the council said, the sign defined the way it is, it's not distracting, his enforcement code violation goes away. So I guess I'm here the same thing to hope that, I'm sure you, all you have seen the sign, I mean, it's sitting right here on Twenty-Seventh, to think it's not distracting for the public or the people. It doesn't flash or change or scroll, it just stays there for ten, twenty, whatever you want, thirty, forty-five seconds, doesn't matter to us. And then it changes to the next verbiage for the next day. So I guess I'm here begging you to let it roll the way it is, or if you want it extended longer, I can extend it longer. That's not a problem at all.
Mayor, Melanie Culpepper, town planner for the record, I just want to clarify that your code says changeable copies, signs shall be allowed provided the, changeable copy signs shall display static images only, which is what it is doing, and the copy may be changed or represented only once every twenty-four hours, is what your code says.
And, and you're doing it once a week?
We change our verbiage one, every Monday. We put, like, today it changed.
No, the message changes every few minutes or, or seconds or...
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, I can't fit it all on one sign, so there's four pages to it that's set for as long as the council deems necessary to sit there. I don't... Like, right now, it says bingo, and bingo sits there, it says bingo, too. They sit there for, like, twenty-five seconds. So I can change that intermittent time between them to anything.
If the town administrator might comment, the code enforcement is doing its job verbatim. This is probably a case in for a penny, in for a pound. So I would encourage council to let code enforcement complete its, complete its job unless you want to change the code to some degree.
It's my understanding that there is a confusion between what code enforcement feels that the council approved and what is in the code. And it's my understanding also that what Commander is saying is that he has one message. The challenge is it does not fit on the sign in one flash. So it truly is one message, it just is different pages of that message.
The challenge also is there are other signs like this up and down the road, and if we change for one, we have to change for everybody, and all of a sudden, it turns into a blinking Christmas tree light driving down Twenty-Seventh, so it puts us in an odd spot on how to proceed. I would love to say yes, just go and do what you need to do, but we've been approached by the people in the past for the same thing, and we've told them no for that very reason. So I don't know where that leaves us. I hate to sit here quietly and not say anything, but...
And I, I thought that was when we approved, because it was a, a variance that we approved for that sign particularly. We didn't have to do that, but we did that with the intention of, intended. My understanding, from what I heard you, when we went through that process, it's gonna be up there once a day and change, not change when we had that con, conversation. And that's why it was approved, in my opinion. That's what I recall from the meeting when we approved it.
And I think I could have really done that if I had not left the top of the sign like the original sign was. I could have put a bigger sign up. I didn't want to do that to distract, so I left a crown on top and made a smaller print area, so it wouldn't be as gaudy and flashy of a sign.
And I understand where you're coming from, but to Councilman Saps, I th, I think we risked not being consistent with everyone in the community and not doing that.
It's just very hard for me when I go a half mile down the road, and we have a marina there that it's constantly rolling and flashing and exploding, and, and ours just sits there. I just, I don't really, and I'm not trying to create waves, I just don't get the difference.
If they're doing that, then code enforcement should be going to them as well.
I heard that they're within the code, and I don't understand how they can be.
And that's what we run into. That's what, it's a slippery slope situation.
I'm double checking, but I'm pretty sure that one's in the county, and so it follows county regulations, but let me just check that.
It was grandfathered.
Yeah, the one right here on the hill.
Yeah, that was prior to the ordinance change of the, of like, grandfathered in. This case has already been given a site, or a notice and a, a code enforcement wa, warning, so to speak. And as the code says, change is a change is a change regardless of how many pages it's, if it's changing every fifteen seconds, that's changing sign. So the code enforcement has issued a verbal warning, a written warning, and we're at that particular stage now.
Yeah, I got the warning today. I got the letter today.
Just in case you need to know that it's in a process already.
So let me, Mr. Mayor, ask Mr. Harris a question. My perception, right or wrong, was that we granted a special exception or exemption for them for the replacement of the sign. We did not, and perhaps we do not even have the ability to grant an exception to the code that talks about the changing nature of the video message. We said, yes, you can put a reader board up to replace the old sign, but I don't know, do we even have latitude to give an exception to the code that dictates how often messages can change, Mr. Harris?
We are way in the weeds of the sign code. I would like to see the matter tabled, and let me look and not do this on the fly. I believe you're correct, but I want to make sure. You know, it's, it's not like all portions of the code, you can say, oh, we'll waive, we'll give an exemption. give an exemption, there are certain portions where we've said, this is subject to discussion, special exception or an exemption or whatever, and others are not, and I don't recall all of those off the top of my head.
And that's why I just didn't want to go too far down this road and make potential decisions that may or not be legally, that we may not be able to legally make. And so I would rather us just ask code enforcement to, if we can do that, just to take a pause, let's figure out exactly what options we legally have per the code.
I appreciate that.
And go down that road, and obviously, I agree, it's a great-looking sign, it's a better sign than you used to have, but I don't want us to go too far and say we'll do something that we don't have the legal authority to do without changing code.
I appreciate that.
If you want, if you want, I can tell you now, or we can table it till the next meeting. So the variances that you have the authority to grant are for sign structure setback, height, face size will be considered by the Town Planning and Zoning Official, so their original request to change the height of the sign because your code, they're in the LPRP, and they had to be eight feet height, so you were able to give them a variance to, for the height of the sign. The variance was not granted by the Town Planning and Zoning Official, and they appealed that decision to the Town Council, and that's how you were able to grant that original variance.
What's the height of the sign today?
I believe it's 24 feet.
So it should have been eight, and we grant an exception to 24?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the same height as our old sign was, it's no higher than the old sign was.
But I, Ms. Culpepper, I take it, what you didn't say is, do we have the ability without changing code to grant an exception or exemption to what I'm going to call the rolling or changing nature of the sign?
So the only variance you can grant from your code currently is to the size of the sign, the height, and the setback.
This is what Melanie does every day, I'm certainly not in a position to disagree with her, I simply don't remember every word of the sign code, so if you want to, I feel certain Melanie is correct.
And if y'all want to table it till the next meeting, you're perfectly welcome to do that, I just wanted to give you that information while I had it in front of me.
No, I appreciate the information, but...
And I think that Councilman Wilson and Sapp are correct in their recollection of it's supposed to change once, just because it's the same message doesn't get you around that issue. Period.
If that language is important to council, if you do table it, I can come back and extract the exact language that was said at the meeting, so, and provide that to you.
What, I guess I would ask that we, not that I doubt Ms. Culpepper one iota, but that we ask Mr. Williams to bring me back the exact language, I would ask you gentlemen, if you would please, to the best of your ability, just have one message a day on your reader board until we get to that point, and I frankly would like to thank code enforcement for taking notice of something and reporting what does not appear to meet our ordinance, and we, we see where we're at on or about September 12.
Appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we go to 4A.
Better bring them both, Melanie, I'm not sure which one.
This is Ordinance 2022-09, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid amending section 154-26C-2, limited commercial district, semicolon, of the code of the Town of Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening again, Melanie Culpepper, Town Planner for the Record, this is the second reading of Ordinance 2022-09. It's an ordinance amending section 15426C2 of your code, we're proposing to amend the code to allow accessory dwelling units, to allow basically a different tenant and, a different tenant in both sections of the building, so downstairs you can have someone operating a business, and then upstairs you can rent the apartment out to a separate person. And it was recommended for approval for, on first reading on May 17, and staff is here for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I will move approval and adoption on second reading of Ordinance 2022-09.
Second.
We got a motion, a second. Any other comments from the podium? All right, saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Bring it back, poll the council, please, clerk.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
All right, next is Ordinance 2022, oh, that's the same thing. All right, here we go. 20-22-07, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, amend the future land use map of the Town of Lake Placid, 2030 comprehensive plan for that properly identified by the Highlands County property appraiser through parcel IDs P-24-36-29-A00-0020-0000, and P-24-36-29-O00-0020-0010, semicolon, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. And this is also on second reading.
Yes, again, Melanie Culpepper, Town Planner for the Record, the hearing has been duly noted and published. This is the second reading for an amendment to the town's comprehensive plan from Highlands County Commercial to the Town of Lake Placid Commercial General. They will have to come back on this property for a PD plan development zoning before they can do any development, but this is just to get it to the town's commercial future land use, so that when they do come in for the PD, they at least have this portion prepared.
And this is a property where Dollar General wanted to come in?
Yes, which I don't know if that is happening anymore.
I understand.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And Ms. Culpepper, you just said this, but I guess I want to make sure we have it on the record. Alls we are doing through this potential action is just changing from county commercial to town commercial, we are not in any way either positively or negatively impacting a potential PD application for an actual zoning use for this property, correct?
That is correct, they originally came in with a PD zoning change and a future land use at the same time, they had a buyer that fell through, and they said, let's go ahead and finish the future land use amendment because they'd already paid the fees, and then that way they don't have to do both again, but they still do have to come back in for a PD zoning change, you cannot develop this without having, it will have a county zoning on it, which will make it inconsistent, so nothing can happen on it until they bring it into town.
With that answer, I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt on second reading, Ordinance 2022-07.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other comments from the podium? All right, hearing none, take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
All right. Next is Ordinance 2022-10, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Lake Placid amending the Lake Placid 2030 comprehensive plan, revising the infrastructure and capital improvement elements based on the town's 10-year water supply facilities work plan incorporated herein, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for approval of comprehensive plan text amendment, providing for incorporation of town water supply plan, providing for implementation of administrative actions, providing for non-codification and scribner's error, providing severability and providing an effective date, legal status of plan amendment, and incorporation into comprehensive plan.
Good evening again, Melanie Culpepper, Town Planner for the Record, as stated, this is the first hearing for the adoption of the 10-year water supply plan update, you all had a consultant, Panoni, and associates do the water supply plan updates for you. As part of those updates, they had a few changes to the capital improvement and infrastructure elements of your comprehensive plan, that is all attached in your staff reports, and staff is available for any questions, and I'm going to ask Joe if you guys have technical questions to help me on that part of it.
Joe, I'll look to you. I know you've looked this over, what's your, what's your thoughts?
Joe Barber for the record, this is just an update of our existing plan, so not much has changed functional-wise as to the systems and pumps and things we own, so most of this was just an update of, you know, new numbers and, and looking at graphs and making sure the numbers are accurate population-wise and, and use averages and whatnot, so this is not anything majorly changed from the last one, it's just more a numbers update.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve on first reading, Ordinance 2022-10. Second.
I'll second.
We got a motion, a second, any comments from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Such a lively group tonight. Hearing none, bring it back to council.
Clarification, I heard two seconds.
That's, yeah, but he...
I think Greg got it first.
I think Charlie was first.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. Next is Agenda Item 4D, conveyance of land for fire and EMS station.
I guess my question here is, do you want to convey the whole three acres or just a portion of it?
Would you like me to weigh in?
Yeah.
Mayor and council, this, I've been working with Councilman Vice Mayor Royce on this, I believe he's had most of the discussions with the county, you want to go through the discussions and I'll then walk through the documents?
Yeah, especially since we have members of the public here tonight, you know, which is, which is good. I'll just take a minute, as you remember, we had originally, back in 2019, had been, we had transferred this particular piece of property to the county for the construction of a new fire and EMS station, ultimately, there were some concerns, and then we worked with the county to have Advent Health Hospital donate a piece of property, the county's run into some very significant environmental concerns out there that would have cost the project a lot of time and at least $300,000 to $400,000 of environmental mitigation, so we revisited bringing it back in town, the cost of building materials also now make it where they'll build this building out of masonry and have a metal roof, and it will fit the appropriate code in town, and so in converse, so we had, so I've been part of some meetings with county administration, and they indicated that they perceive, I use that word intentionally, that they should be able to cite this building on approximately one-third to one-half of the property. It is possible, once they have their consultants actually cite it and they determine what retention pond space they need, could it be up to a half? Perhaps, but it, but it should be less than a half, so what the county has requested from us is before they spend more money, they just wanted some surety, some level of surety, that we were going to be willing to donate the property to them again, you know, before they spent tens of thousands of dollars making plans to cite the building there, so I think the way it's going to work is this letter's intended to tell them, yes, we will provide the property to you, they'll work with their consultants at some stage in the coming months, they will come back to us and they will say, we need to go exactly this deep, and then there will be an exact legal description of the property to be conveyed, and we will convey that exact amount of property. Also, part of the conversation with the county, as they plan and construct this station, they're going to put in a, whether you want to call it a road, a driveway access, they're going to build something so that we, the town, will be able to access the east, the eastern half or so of the property in case we want to build something there in the future, in case we want to have a park there, but part of the plan will be very clear, public access, probably either across the north or the south side of their parcel for the Publix, for, so that we'll be able to use the eastern portion of the property in the future, and there'll probably be some park qualities, and they've made it very clear that they want this fire and EMS station to be very publicly oriented, they want people to come there, those types of things, and so I think it's in our best interest just to give the county surety that we're willing to donate a portion of that parcel again. Long-winded answer to your question.
Would you tell everybody where it's at, I don't think you do that.
Oh, it's, it's Hillcrest, correct? It's on Hillcrest, we have about a three-acre parcel that sits to the south of the apartment complex and sits to the north of the law offices of Mr. Harris and Ms. Carlson, and fronts on Hillcrest, and the eastern portion of it abuts to kind of the parking lot area of the old plaza by the subway, for lack of a better term.
Publix.
Publix Plaza, right.
Publix Parking.
But the access for the entire parcel will be coming off of Hillcrest, the road that runs in front of the post office.
Okay.
As you recall, we have to adopt an ordinance to sell or convey any town property, so one of the documents you have is the ordinance, this is similar to the ordinance that you adopted last time, I've included the last ordinance and revised it, and we learned a lot as we went through the last process, and in the last time we did this, we had some things keep coming up, like the building materials that surprised folks later on, so I took the liberty of giving you a draft of everything from the interlocal agreement to the ordinance, to the planned development ordinance that would say how the land is to be used for a fire EMS station, and the interlocal agreement, I would consider the interlocal agreement as the master document because it sets out the expectations of both the town and the county in going forward with the firehouse. I have included in that interlocal agreement a statement that... I have included in that interlocal agreement a statement that they've asked for the third, but they can use up to a half. That is your commitment to them. They then started talking about, well, we might need a little bit more, and Ray and I have spoken, and I think we've decided, if you do, come show us, we're not saying no, but we really don't want to go beyond that because we want to make sure that they use their end of the property efficiently and say, because that would be a really nice office place or other use for the town for the east end. So, to, you know, the mayor can't commit, Ray can't commit, I can, nobody can commit, it takes this board to say, yes, we'll do this. So, my suggestion is for you to approve and adopt the interlocal agreement tonight. Let the mayor sign it, send it to them, so they know what you'll do. I suspect after they cite the building, they'll come back and want a couple of tweaks in it. They'll propose it, and either they will adopt and send it to us to be signed, or we'll adopt, either way, don't care. But that's the best way to say, yes, here's what we'll do. So, my recommended motion is, I move we adopt the proposed interlocal agreement.
And of course, there's a reversion clause, that if it is not used for a fire and EMS station, then it comes back to us again, just like it did last time.
So moved. Did you catch that even?
Just clarification, are we doing the ordinance separately, Bert?
We're not doing the ordinance tonight.
Not tonight, okay, just.
Only if they adopt, or after they adopt, the interlocal agreement will start the ordinance, but we're ready to go, it's easy.
Let me ask a question. Can our town attorney make a?
Do what?
Can our town attorney make that motion?
I was just clarifying.
He made the motion, I moved on.
I was just clarifying the ordinance.
We just need a second for it.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we got it in the record the right way.
And in support of my second, let me say that the intention, the intention is the county is trying to move as quickly as governmental bodies can on this, and the hope is that we'll be in the design phase in the coming months, that they'll be bidding this project in the first or second quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, and hopefully this project will be under construction, well, our document says by the end of June of two thousand and twenty-three. So, the idea is that in the next nine to ten months, we'll get this thing under construction because it really will be nice to have this level of a fire and EMS station in Lake Placid that'll allow them to house full-time employees around the clock and provide us an even higher level of fire and EMS service to both the town of Lake Placid and the surrounding area.
All right, any other comments from the podium? Take it to the audience. Okay, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Excuse me. All right, next is four E. Annexation of the Lake Placid Advent Hospital.
Tonight is the night that you would determine whether you want to proceed with annexation of the hospital. Recall, we annexed everything around the hospital owned by Advent Health a year ago, approximately. The hospital has come back and said, we're ready to see you annex the hospital as well. There is a fiscal impact. Phil normally can calculate the loss in revenue from the twenty-five percent on utilities versus the increase in communication tax. He nor I have the data required to make the calculation of the communication tax. The hospital said and told me it was about twenty-three thousand a year that would come to the town, and I believe, I believe the county engineer, town engineer has calculated at a loss of twelve thousand a year in utility revenue. Joe, am I close to telling the truth on that, or Phil, or somebody?
That might have been Kevin.
Phil?
I'd have to look back at the email, Bert.
Okay, pretty sure I was told that, but at any rate, you could, if that turns out to be not correct, you do not have to proceed. This is a three-meeting process. Tonight, you would determine if you want to begin the annexation procedure. Our first step is to advise Highlands County, Board of County Commissioners. We have the consent of the hospital to be annexed. Here's a copy, we're going to proceed and give them notice of that. Next meeting would be the first reading of your ordinance, and the third meeting would be the approval of the ordinance. And I've put in an effective date for the end of this year. Keep in mind, there will be no property tax involved with this because it's a nonprofit corporation. In addition to the change in water sewer as well as communication tax, you will see some increase in police service because that just is inherent with an emergency room. When a fistfight breaks out down at the local bar and grill, sometimes it transfers to the emergency room where they're trying to stitch people up. That's the only impact I can see. Have I missed much, Chief, or Phil?
No, but I wanted to add your question from the utility director, their rate will drop about twelve thousand per year.
Mr. Williams, we'll also pick up garbage, solid waste service there, correct, that we do not currently handle?
We don't currently handle it.
But we will upon annexation or at some period of time after annexation?
Correct, and there are certain obstacles, we'll have to look at that one because of hazardous materials and those sort of things. So, we talked about it once before with the director of that department, and so we'll have to kind of look at different aspects of it, see what kind of garbage they have. We can't handle anything with bloodborne pathogens, that sort of thing, so.
But what, Mr. Harris, what we're being asked to do potentially tonight is say, let's move forward. We're not taking much more action other than saying, let's move forward, and then staff will bring us probably back very exact, more exacting numbers as we move forward in the process, correct?
Okay. I suspect you're going to find in garbage, that's going to be a wash. I mean, you're not going to profit on that one, but it'll cover your cost. But I agree, certainly Phil is correct, we need to look and see if there's something we can't handle. So, the motion, recommended motion would be to authorize the mayor to notify the county that you intend to proceed with the annexation of the hospital based upon their consent, if that's what you want to do.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any other comments from the podium?
I think this, if we don't annex, this is another example of checkerboard annexation, so I think it's very important that this be included in our annexation since apparently we have annexed everything around it.
Okay. Take it to the audience. All right, saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. Next is five C. Amended documents for the Camp and Conference Center.
Mayor? Just get, four F.
I did?
Mm-hmm. The.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Gentlemen, give us a couple minutes, or maybe longer. Thank you, clerk. All right, this is Lake Placid Regional Utility Rate Increase. Joe, I'll turn that over to you.
Joe Barber, for the record, I'm covering for Kevin McCarthy tonight, utility director, he is at the.
Hold on a minute, let me read the ordinance.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen. An ordinance of the town of Lake Placid raising certain utility rates amended and restating Article Two and Three, Sections one thirty-five dash two hundred through and including one thirty-five dash three oh seven of the town's regional utility code, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Okay.
All right, Joe Barber, again, for the record, I'm covering for Kevin McCarthy, utility director. He's at the Florida Water Conference, representing us there. This is the rate study that's being presented to have our rates match the proposed budget. As you've heard in the last budget meeting, everything has gone up. These are the rates needed to support the ongoing utility budget. A rough summary is that water rates are increasing about ten percent, wastewater about twelve percent. We have also changed the way that the stepped increase works. Before, we had multiple steps at some odd numbers. Now, we're just going for five thousand gallon increments, and then we're changing it from a fifteen-cent step to a twenty-five-cent step. So, first five thousand gallons is the first rate, the next rate after that, five to ten thousand, would be twenty-five cents more, and you'll see that reflected in this ordinance. That's kind of the summary we used. I can really get into the technical as to how we came up with these, but I used some old billing numbers and ran a scenario based on usage to come up with a projected revenue that meets the proposed budget, and this is what it equals.
And the utility department has sent notice to all of our customers by mail at the utility billing address as required by Chapter one eighty.
Correct. That is correct, right, Rachel?
Yes.
The message that, if I'm not mistaken, the message that went out said to check the website to find the rates, or to listen to the council meeting tonight.
And I think our ordinance generally, Phil's going, are you going to put this on the, Phil, are you going to put the ordinance on the website?
Yes, sir, it's already in there, but.
There you go.
Okay.
And it's streaming live tonight.
I'd also like to note, there was a couple changes, since this is first reading, the finance director had a few things that are in our rate code that she would also like changed, and know if it's possible to have that changed as, and brought back before you at second reading. There is a twenty-dollar limit at which we, if, basically, if you owe the utility more than twenty dollars on the next billing cycle and you're delinquent, then you will be put on the shut-off list. They're requesting to change that to fifty dollars, so we can avoid a couple of shut-off situations. And then, the other, which I don't know can be, is a collections issue, which we may have to do a code change and bring before you next, but I think the changing the delinquent shut-off fee from twenty to fifty dollars, I would propose to bring that to you in the next reading, if that's possible, Mr. Town Attorney.
If you'd send me the change you want immediately, we'll have it put in if the council approves that change tonight. Do you, do you know the section of the code? If you can take a moment and find it, let's read it into the record tonight and.
I've got it from your email, as long as that's correct. That's one thirty-five dash two oh five, Section Seven, and that's in collections. We're asking that delinquent balance to be changed from twenty dollars to fifty dollars, and that will help some customers to not be shut off as much, and I think part of this was also changing the connection-disconnection fee when you are turned off to fifty dollars from forty dollars, so.
I recall that one.
Kind of even, you have to, at least owe the town fifty dollars to get shut off, basically.
Very well, it will be adequate if we announce that, that you approve the draft ordinance as presented, comma, with the one amending it to include a change, increase from twenty to fifty in Section one thirty-five dash two oh five, Section Seven. Any other changes?
There's one more, but I don't think it can be handled in this, we'll probably have to bring it to you as a separate code change.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, the motion would be to approve.
I'll make the motion as read by the mayor, twenty-twenty-two thirteen, on first reading, be approved with the additions Joey requested for the increases, two increases.
Second for discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the podium? Take it to the audience. Sir, come up, state your name, your address.
My name is Richard Johan, I live at eight South Vista Drive in Lake Placid. I just have one little question on the letter we got. It says that the proposed rate ordinance will be posted in the town website, is that now happening?
Yeah, that's, that's what Phil said, that it's either there or will be there.
Okay, because I tried a couple days ago, and I couldn't seem to find where it was, so. Thank you, that's all.
It'll definitely be there before the second reading, so.
Thank you.
I will say, it is there in the form of the agenda package right now, but in the next couple days, I'll put it on the website to where it'll be a lot more accent and stand out better. Right now, it's in the form of the agenda package.
That would be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll go to the camping conference. This is on amended documents for the Camping Conference Center. Okay, Joe?
I think I'm going to hand this one off to Bert.
Cute.
You may recall, a few months back, we had a debate over the bulk service agreement and what was being pledged to secure the Camping Conference Center loan. Since the time of that, we adopted last month the bulk service, excuse me, at the special meeting, the state DEP came back and said, there's going to be a thirty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollar service fee, I think they call that points in the private sector, on the loan to the conference center. So, we had to amend and restate the bulk wastewater agreement, and since the resolution pledging it pointed to the particular document, we'll need to adopt a second resolution. So, the proposed motion would be to adopt the first amended limited and conditional pledge of wastewater system revenue to the state of Florida, to the Florida State Revolving Fund, which is Resolution twenty-two dash eleven, and in the same motion to approve the first amended restated bulk service agreement. Corbett, are the numbers correct?
Yes.
Have I missed anything, Corbett?
No.
The proposed motion would be to approve the proposed resolution and first amended agreement, bulk service agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Town planning services. Mr. Attorney, I'll give this one to you.
Last month, we had noticed that the county was not going to be able to continue doing all of the planning services that they. all of the planning services that they have in the past. You directed me to meet with them. We had that meeting last week. And in your agenda package is a statement that explains the position of the county and a couple of courses of action. The county planner and Development Services Director are here tonight. Why don't you take a seat and make sure I tell the truth and my memory doesn't fail? They feel comfortable continuing doing the zoning review when people come in for a single-family home construction permit. We already, we've had, that's the longest standing agreement with the county, that the town has had, they do our building permits. And that goes back before Bert, so that's longer than 30 years. Brother Duney set that one up. They're saying that one will continue. That basically funds itself through the Building Department fees. It makes a lot of sense to me that while a contractor is up there getting a Building Department permit, he can walk next door and get the zoning review. And actually, it's reverse order. You do the zoning first. And basically, the town would take over all other planning and zoning functions. We'll get to that in a moment. Let me finish. So, we would amend or have a new interlocal agreement, because I believe where we left it, the meeting was with these two ladies, as well as the county attorney. And I believe the consensus was, we've been entering an interlocal agreement every year, setting out the scope of services that the county would provide. So, the new agreement would simply say they're going to do those, excuse me, the zoning review. Apparently, we have not been charging for the zoning review. The county does. When the county issues a building permit for a single-family home anywhere not in the Kent Town, they charge how much?
So, if it's for a new home, Melanie Culpepper, Town Planner for the record, if it's for a new home, it's $45 for the review. If it's for a shed, it's $20. Boat houses, I believe, are also $20. So, it's, you know, about 20 to $45 that the town is not currently charging.
So, the suggestion would be we authorize them to charge the same rates as the county charges, which would fluctuate, which would fluctuate over time. If the county raises, it goes up for us, too. And then, that would fund, help me, did we conclude that would fund your services? There would be no further payment to the county beyond those charges. So, just like the Building Department, it's a self-funding service.
And I misspoke, I'm sorry. It's $65 for a new home. So, it's anywhere from 20 to 65.
And the zoning review, basically, they look at the plat, they look at the zoning existing, make sure the setbacks, et cetera, whatever it has to be. And if there needs to be a special exception, that's discussed as well. Have I missed anything, ladies?
No.
No.
So, that is the proposal that the county is suggesting. We do not have an interlocal agreement, I believe?
No.
For tonight, we will, next meeting, which will be our September meeting, and it would go into effect October 1. So, we'll have time to bring you that agreement at that time, if you're comfortable with that direction.
So, and just to clarify, this would be if they needed a special exception or a variance, that would have to come through the town's planners, but we would tell them if they would need one or not.
That is correct. Any questions on the function of the county? The next, you may proceed a couple of ways. And I did not have time to research this in the past. If you've noticed the amount coming from the town attorney, I've been kind of stepping and fetching to keep up with you guys. Before we hired the county, we had Jim LaRue, LaRue Planning, acting as our planning department, if you will. And he handled literally everything for us. I called Jim, I remember Jim, he and I overlapped for a bit. He was here and Hoz Compton, who is out of the country right now, very supportive of suggesting Mr. LaRue come back in and retake that position. And Mr. LaRue has just lost one client and said he would have the time and energy to pick us up if we so desire. I ask whether or not he had a customer that had similar price and pricing structures and size, and he did. It's Indian shores, it's in your agenda packet. If you're comfortable going with Mr. LaRue, we, I will research and confirm, and the next meeting, bring you back an agreement that says we'll do a piggyback with Mr. LaRue on that. And if we can't, we'll authorize town staff to publish and advertise for that. If you're not comfortable with Mr. LaRue and you want to, or if you're not comfortable not advertising, we can always say, staff, publish, and see if there are others. I don't, Phil has already contacted Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and they have declined. So, I can't tell you that I know of others in the area that would be willing to pursue, but we can advertise if you would like and see if there are any takers.
I will tell you that for several years, I had the opportunity to work with Mr. LaRue. And he is very competent. He attended every one of our meetings. I was very, very pleased with his service. And he's very familiar with our town and probably what we're still doing. I have no problem with going with Mr. LaRue.
That was basically what Hoz said. He liked his service very much as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Mr. Harris, what we're talking about is with this option, utilizing Mr. LaRue as needed on an hourly basis with, on a contract that could be terminated at any time by either party, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, frankly, I don't know that we have a whole lot of other choices right now because it is August the 8th, and we're going to be without planning help in 50 days or so. And so, frankly, we don't have time. Even if we wanted to advertise and go through that process, that would take multiple months. And so, I think this is, this is the best shorter, at least, I mean, intermediate or at least short-term solution to keep moving forward.
You have in the past budgeted $35,000 to pay the county. This may change the county's mind about not doing our work. It's going to cost you double that, or it could. I don't think it will, quite frankly, because in the past year, we've not had a lot of... Wait a minute.
Development.
That's easy for me to say in my air-conditioned law office 10 miles away. I don't think we've had every meeting stuffed to be done.
We have had a lot of development, even though we necessarily haven't made a lot of decisions on things. There have been pre-application meetings and discussions on plan developments and things like that. That being said, I can't say how much the consultant would cost you because it's a different, it's an hourly rate, it's a different structure. So, it's just you have to see how it works. I know we have a consultant doing some of our work in our first bill. I think it was maybe seven hours, and it was like 700 and something dollars, so...
I will say that some time back, the town looked at perhaps considering Mr. LaRue again, and I looked at what his costs were at that time, and they were about double what we were paying for county planning and for that reason. But there again, we had a lot of projects, and all I was comparing was, was things like Walgreens and things like that, you know, that were projects coming in. But I do expect it to cost a little bit more.
Well, I would hope that, I would expect that this is what we need to do, shorter, intermediate term. And then, we need to develop a long-range plan, and perhaps it'll be staying with Mr. LaRue, perhaps it'll be doing it in-house. But for the short term, we need to do this, and I noticed Rachel left. I'll just say as an aside, if we, no matter what action we take, Eva, you need to remind Rachel to put some dollars in next year's budget for planning, because during our workshop last week, there was no planning money in the budget, I don't believe. So, we need to stick 50 or 60 grand in there for this.
I'm fine with that. I just saw on one of the invoices that he showed in here as an example, that he charged $700 per meeting. I don't know if those are five-minute meetings or five-hour meetings, but that might be something we'll need to address if we're going to use him. And I think we're up against a wall with this. You're right. But if he's coming to three or four meetings a month, that could get really expensive if that's what he's doing with us.
I'll say an hour interlocal right now, it says that you all will reimburse the county for travel and for paper and for supplies, and the county is not charging you extra for those things. So, it could have been more, potentially. I just know that we haven't been actually charging you, so... Not to say that if we were charging you more money, we would continue. It's not that at all. It is completely that I am one person and I just can't keep up.
I understand. Been a pleasure to work, and I hate to see the change. I think there has been an awful lot of benefit to both governments to have a cooperative staff. The county government knows what we're doing in development, and we know what they're doing in development.
Right.
And I hate to see that end.
Well, as I've stated, we're still going to continue to work with you guys. We're not going to, you know, do away of our relationship. And the water supply plan that I started this meeting, it does have to go to DEO, and will probably come back to you after October, and I will bring that back. I will ask Joe for help on that, but I will bring it back to you guys. So, anything that I'm working on at this time, I will finish.
Thank you.
I am familiar with Mr. LaRue as well, and I agree with the fact, I think he would be, once again, a good fit for us. And I also understand Mr. Royce's comment that we really can't afford time-wise to go to bid, but I think it's not fair if we don't. So, I would see that maybe we could hire Mr. LaRue on a temporary basis until we could actually put out an RFP and see what others might be out there, including if he wants to go ahead and put in for it, and we may turn around and hire him anyway. I just think it's not right that we don't put it out at some point.
I think I would add to the conversation. I don't know that we could have a one- or two-month planner and then try to, because we would be training and transitioning two times at that point. So, I'm not saying it couldn't be a short-term thing, but we need to at least stick with someone long enough so we don't have a gap in service, really. Because that, if we use them for one or two months and then tried to advertise and get a new one, I think we would have a pretty decent gap in service.
I don't think we would, because Mr. LaRue is familiar with us. He's been here before, he's worked for us before. If it was someone else, I could understand it, Joe, but the only, the only block I would say in that regard of a training issue would be if we went out to RFP and Mr. LaRue did not get hired, then we would have a training period for whomever did. But I don't see any kind of a training issue with LaRue planning coming in.
I miss, I need to make one correction. I'm glad you spoke up, Joe. Joe reached out to Panoni, our engineer, and they apparently have a department that does planning. I don't know what amount, I've not engaged with them. Joe, and I saw they came back and responded that they would be interested in offering service. Joe, what scope do they do? Do you know?
I didn't...
Just the engineering, or is it all the light up?
It was for planning services, so...
Do you know what that means in their case?
They sent a scope, and I wasn't, and I can't tell you definitively right here, no.
So, there, I cannot say there's not another option.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're hiring Panoni to do some planning services for ordinances and parking planning and those kinds of things. So, they must, they must have a pretty wide suite of what they're capable of doing.
And you guys can always consult with more than one consultant, too. You know, if there's a conflict with one consultant doing it because they're doing some engineering site plan work, you might need a backup consultant. So, it's something to consider.
And our code has changed significantly since he's worked for us, so I think it will be a get-up-to-speed period for whomever comes on. So, I'm not saying we couldn't, you know, in the longer term, find, go out, but I just would hate to have to train someone twice, because I think there would be a little bit of a gap in service there from just having some folks that aren't up to speed yet. My only concern, I'm just voicing that. And to add to what they've already said, a lot of the work that Melanie does is dealing with call-ins and questions. That's 95% of what you guys don't see, and you see 5% of the work that actually makes it to you. So, she does a tremendous amount of work. There may be a scenario in which we can have some staff help do the administration, the routing of the questions, or the beginning of the applications, you know, to maybe save some time from them. We probably need to discuss that internally and see what that looks like once we get the new planner onboard. So, I think we can help, but some of the planning level tasks, we need to get some consultant help.
So, am I understanding you to say that you would prefer to have Panoni versus LaRue?
Didn't say that, so...
Okay.
But I think Panoni is an option, and we have through their, I believe, and Bert will have to look at this, through our continuing services contract with them, I think we could possibly approach them as well. But I don't know if that gets us into CCNA or not. I think that's a Bert question he would need to look at.
And if we, if we decide that we're going to ask somebody else, does that not sort of require us to ask whomever? Can we just ask one more? Or, I mean, I feel rather uncomfortable with asking just one more entity. I mean, if we're going to put out an RFP, we need to put one out, or not.
Just for note, if we're piggybacking on somebody else's contract with him, we are complying with our, with our financial policy, so...
I believe we are. I just, there's a couple more places I need to look. I wanted to bring this to council and get a little more guidance before I spend any more time going in a particular direction.
Let me, I would hope that, I believe we need to probably go to contract with LaRue, at least for the intermediate period of time. I think Mr. Williams and others need to get with Chief Fensler, and we need to see what level of stuff can be done in-house, and how do we minimize the professional time we're hiring from LaRue? Is there, you know, some of the smaller, I'm not saying any of it's mundane, but mundane questions that hopefully, like code enforcement or something, can handle, and we see whether or not we have the aptitude to start taking on more and more of it? You know, the downside to doing an RFP, I believe, is then we have to rank all of the responding firms, and then we have to enter into negotiations. And so, it creates its own little potential complications. Am I relatively accurate about that, Mr. Harris, or not?
The CCNA, I don't believe applies.
Okay.
I believe this is a matter of our code purchasing requirement of $10,000 or more. So, I don't think you got to go through the ranking.
Okay.
Again, I kind of...
Well, because it's August 8th, I'll make a motion, the town entering the proposed planning service agreement with LaRue Planning and the proposed limited planning services interlocal agreement with Highlands County upon confirmation that the town may piggyback upon another community's agreement.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium?
And I'll just say in support of my motion, I hope that in the months that follow, that we continue to explore options and that we don't just lean heavily on this unless we need to forever, that we continue to figure out how, if there's a more efficient, cost-effective way to do this. And I really hope the county is able to find some additional planners, and we'll get back on Ms. Salz and Ms. Culpepper, and we'll re-up with the county, because I think it has been a very productive relationship for the last decade or so.
And we're going to miss your shining faces. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other comments from the audience? Bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Next is 5D1, Lake June Phase 2 Project. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, Mayor, I brought this to the town council's attention in the budget meeting. In the RPAC meeting, the project, Lake June Park Phase 2 improvements, were approved for $140,844, with an 85% of the county, from Highlands County, and the town contributed in 24, for a total of $165,648.75. The project came in a lot higher in the bids than what we expected at $250,000. So, basically, what I need from the town council is your decision on to spend an additional $109,308, plus engineering costs, so far of around $4,500. The Southwest Florida Waters Management Permit is good for five years on this particular project, or whether you want to seek another project and...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we not move forward with this project at this time and that we consider other potential projects to, for submittal to RPAC, and that we take this back up in the coming months.
Second.
All right, we have our motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have discussion. I think the chief sent out, I would like to make a suggestion. I've been kind of an advocate of, for pickleball, and I've got that Phil sent out earlier, Spring Lakes' proposal, and what it, an eight-court setup would cost. And granted, now, this was done back in October of 2021, but at the time, they were looking at, with the county, $180,000 project. Now, we've been granted this money, correct, for this project?
Correct, but it's project-specific, I think, as Ray said last time, it is project-specific. But keep in mind, if you look at the Spring Lakes Project, it's a Taj Mahal up there. I mean, we don't have to build anything near that big as far as those pickleball courts.
Well, it's, eight courts is not, the footprint is two tennis courts, Jeff? It's basically the same footprint as two tennis courts, not four, two. You can get eight courts on there, and it's been shown in some of the studies that I've seen with TDC and everything, that in terms of drawing people for tournaments and everything, and for a good recreational base, you know, generally, eight is kind of the magic number where it becomes feasible to be included in tournaments and such.
Is eight enough to do tournaments?
That's the bare minimum, generally.
And certainly within the intent of my motion, you know, that Mr. Wilson and Mr. Williams, I mean, I would hope that people would come forward with other potential RPAC-related projects for submittal, and so I would, and I guess that was my point of delaying moving forward with this project, is I would hope we would, if there are other projects that we'd like to make application for, with the understanding that we would go to RPAC and say, well, that's, money's not ours, we would like to kind of replace this project with that project. I mean, I would hope that Mr. Williams and Mr. Wilson and others figure out how to make an application packet for other projects at that park.
That can be done. I've got Mr. Jeff Linsong here, who's a pickleball ambassador for Highlands County. If he cared to add anything to it, Jeff, do you have anything to add to the discussion other than, I personally know hundreds of people in our community that play, and he can, he plays quite a bit.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Linsong. I live on Oak Beach Boulevard out in the county by Lake Josephine. I'm a USA Pickleball Ambassador for Highlands County. Myself and another gentleman represent USA Pickleball here in Highlands County. You need pickleball courts, public pickleball courts in Lake Placid. Pickleball's, I could be up here all night telling you all about pickleball. I know. How you doing? It's the fastest-growing sport here in the U.S. Right now, I run a program over at the Genesis Center, First Presbyterian Church, at the gym. We play five times a week on a good week when nothing's going on in the gym, and I've got 120 people on my notification list to play pickleball, three courts inside the gym. Now, fortunately, not everybody shows up at the same time, but you got Sun and Lake, Lake Placid, south of town. During season, she's got about 65, 70 participants that play there. There's a smattering of public courts around this area, Covered Bridge, Water's Edge, just to name a couple. But there's no public place that I, a family could come home at night, eat their dinner, and decide to take the kids and go play pickleball somewhere. That place does not exist in the Lake Placid area. And to put courts, at least eight courts, would be what I would recommend, would be an ideal recreational facility, opportunity, amenity for a town such as Lake Placid. Those courts would be busy all the time, and the sport is just, it's just growing. It's each year.
Okay.
If I could answer any questions, people aren't happy to. I could talk about pickleball all night.
No, I think we're good.
Not all night.
And I would invite any one of you to come out and try it. You need to experience it to understand the allure of the game. It's for everybody, including everybody out here.
If I can play, anyone can play.
Yeah, if Charlie can get out there and play, then anybody can play.
I think it also gives our town an opportunity that Ms. Casey Wall would love to exploit, to bring more visitors to Lake Placid, overnight, short-term visitors that don't affect us in a big, bad way, but that would rent our hotel rooms and utilize restaurants for the purpose of tournaments. So, if we're going to do this, I'd like to keep that in mind, and we build courts to the standard that would be available for tournaments.
Okay, right. And again, if I could just add two things, eight courts, like the councilman said, would be the minimum to attract at least a minimal tournament. I would plan for expansion, because I'm telling you, once they're built, they will come, and include lights. A lot of people forget about lights, especially in season. You know, it gets dark early. This is a sport that appeals to families. It's not a senior citizen sport anymore, and it's, it's dark at 4:30, 5 o'clock during season. So, you want to be able to, you know, come out and play some pickleball in the evening, and lights are a necessity.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
And let me reiterate, the intent of my motion is that we not move forward with the parking lot stuff at this time. Not that we turn it down, not that we walk completely away from it, but that we explore other potential options and/or other options on how, if we want to take, take advantage of the county funding to the tune of roughly $140,000, are there other things that perhaps we could do? I just, I just don't want us to obligate ourselves to $130,000 or $140,000 tonight to move forward. So, I would encourage us to look at other options. And I know if it's a pickleball, we're going to have to go back to submit an application and have that conversation with RPAC.
All right, Clerk, where are we at?
You have a, first and second.
We do, okay. All right, any other comments?
I'm just curious, how many, and I don't want to start a war here or anything, but how many pickleball courts would fit on a basketball court?
You talking about the one uptown?
By the library.
Two, maybe three.
Maybe three.
So, it wouldn't be worth it.
The reason I know anything about this at all is because people approached us at Golf Hammock to put pickleball courts on our, on our tennis courts there as well.
Okay, bring her back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
All right, the last thing I have is 5D2.
Mr. Mayor, this is basically a clarification of your last motion for the work that Panoni gave us proposal for. We're just, it was my understanding that that motion was meant to include all of the proposals, so this is a revised motion, so that we can authorize that. Well...
The motion is to undo the motions that town council did, make a recommendation to the CRA board to fund.
Okay.
So, that's basically what the motion's going to do, and then when you meet up as a CRA board, the CRA can then approve to pay it out of the CRA funds versus the town budget it funds.
I'll make a motion that we rescind earlier action in regards to the Panoni contract and that we authorize the CRA to do the expenditures of all three projects utilizing CRA funds, if that's adequate, Eva.
To clarify, you're recommending to your CRA board?
Okay, to, yes.
Because they're two, they're two separate boards.
Right, recommend to the CRA board that they do that. At our, and we'll be having a CRA meeting on September 12th or 19th, correct?
Yes.
Right. And then, again, in support of this motion, I know that the county has already sent us a check for their half of the $13,000, so we're already in receipt of a check that basically you all are just holding...
Yes.
...at this time, and that we would then ask the CRA board to fund a total of $13,475 of those funds towards the Dahl Hall-North Main Intersection Project, and it's a parking study, and looking at some ordinances that were applicable to an area beyond that.
Yes, and then what the county sent will then be put back to the CRA, that, their portion.
Right. And I say, again, I think several of us thought we had already taken care of this. Obviously, the CRA is a new twist, but that's the main thing, is want to get it covered.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing, I'm going to take of the audience. Right, seeing, not bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, since this is related to Dahl Hall-North Main Intersection, my favorite constituent has been bending my ear about that intersection again, and I would hope that we could ask the county to, and I know we're going to do this, and it's going to, but it's going to take some time. I do believe we have a dangerous situation there, and I would hope that maybe we would have staff speak with the county about the county doing a pedestrian striping across North Main at the northern edge of Dahl Hall Boulevard, so that it's clear where pedestrians should cross the street. I think there's a striping that crosses Dahl Hall from one parking lot to the other, and we've always had a problem of where do people cross to go over to what I'll call the Journal Plaza area? And I think especially with that designated crossing, then it makes it easier for our law enforcement agency to do some signage, and we need to warn the public to slow down and that pedestrians have the right of way. And I'm, I just, I witness it all the time myself. People just fly through there. They have little to no regard for pedestrians crossing in that area, and I think in the short term, we ought to ask the county to do a minimal, at least a minimal, striping so that we have a pedestrian crossing area, and maybe the county could put up some signage that reminds the public that pedestrians, the law was actually amended this year, that you don't even have to have a pedestrian in the walkway. If a motorist sees a pedestrian waiting to cross the street, that pedestrian now has the right of way. And on a similar note, I'll point out to the chief and others, I notice that very frequently at the Journal Plaza, there are several obvious repeat offenders that park in non-parking areas all the time, and that we ought, at the very least, warn those two same individuals all the time that continue to park in no parking areas or in areas that aren't for parking, that they shouldn't be parking there. It's the same two vehicles several times a week.
I will say that county engineering has been approached about a walkway before, and they didn't want to put one there for several reasons. Number one being, if you put a walkway in, it gives the person some sort of an imaginary feeling of safety. Number two, if they put a walkway in, then they're designating it as a crossway, and they had to take out several parking places on the other side of the road, so as the person would come, would be coming out and had clear visibility. And that was their reason about four years ago.
And I would suggest that, I believe, and I may very well be wrong, but I believe that if you went on the northern edge of Dahl Hall Boulevard and you went across to areas that are currently not striped for parking, that there may be a way to do that and avoid losing any parking places. I just know that it is dangerous crossing the road there, in that, in that the absence of a marked crosswalk means that people cross the street in multiple locations there. And back when we asked, at the time, Mr. Gavaretti, we were talking about crossing south of Dahl Hall, that would then involve crossing across the median. Where I'm talking about is moving north of Dahl Hall and having one kind of designated thing. The county engineer may not want to do it, but I just think we ought to at least ask them to do something in the short term. They've obviously, they've obviously agreed that there's a need for improvements in that intersection, and I just hate to wait months and months and months until we get the Panoni study back, and then we wait till we figure out how things, you know, major improvements are going to be funded. Seems with a little bit of paint, we might be able to make it a little bit safer in that, and with some signage that reminds motorists that the pedestrians do have the right of way.
I have a question for you. Exactly where do you think this crosswalk would end up? Because, and my point is, I was there this weekend, and I tried to do the walk, okay? So, I parked in the parking lot, the, oh, gosh, all right, help me, directions are not my best suit, but I would say the south parking lot. I went across in the crosswalk, and then I was stuck, okay? So, if I went straight across from there, there is no crosswalk after that, if I went straight across, I ran into legally parked cars. If I took about a 45-degree angle, I ran into the place that was not currently occupied by the vehicle you were talking about, but he came later and parked there. I know what you're talking about. But the easiest way for me to cross, when I park in that south parking lot, is to try to find my way through the, through the plantings, which don't give you any good place to walk, and to go across to the median and then across the other side of the street. But once again, if I'm at a 90-degree angle to any of this, I'm running into a parking place.
And Ms. Hayes, to answer your question, I, if it was simple and easy, then the county engineer would have already done it, and I'm certainly not an engineer, but I am compelled to bring a constituent's concern to the council, and I hear about this from this constituent all the time, that she fears for her life crossing the road there.
I agree with the concern, and, you know, I'm not as fleet of foot as I used to be either, but, you know, you still have to understand that you can't just decide that you're going to put a crosswalk, and then all of a sudden, oh, well, jeez, it's got to go at a 45-degree angle. I don't think they're going to let you do that. I don't know, but I don't think they are.
And that may very well be the answer, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm just asking that we, that while we wait for the results of the Panoni work, that we ask the county engineer's office to take another look and see if there isn't something that can be done in the near future.
They had done a couple renderings for us, and I, my memory is not that great, and I don't remember if it included a crosswalk, but the... But the previous county engineer, as Phil was saying, we, we've asked that already. And it's such an atypical geometry really, that I think there's going to have to be some structural intersection changes to really make it, you know, make a crosswalk work. And that was his hesitancy to put one in because it, it just wouldn't work currently. So I think it's going to be some bigger changes than just striping. But we, we will ask.
And perhaps I would then also suggest that even if we do not, if, if someone doesn't stripe it, then we ought to consider, for the limited amount of good it would do, we ought to consider asking them to do some signage that reminds motorists that state law gives the right of way to pedestrians. And I, and as I read the law, I think it's Rule 170 or something, there doesn't even have to be a designated crosswalk. I mean, if you or I, one of us is waiting to cross the road, we have the presumption of right of way. And I just, I don't think people in our area are used to, I know they don't. I mean, they just come flying through there at thirty-five, forty miles an hour. So it's just a matter of time before, with all that's going on. So if not striping, then signage, preferably striping and signage, and then ultimately we'll get a change. But I just wanted, I know that a number of people, including this constituent, tell me about this all the time. So I just want us to keep it top of mind.
You may have noticed in my older age, I don't interrupt the council discussions as much as I used to. But I feel compelled in this one to weigh in. I totally agree that we need to ask the county for guidance and for a crosswalk. Phil is absolutely correct. We've done it before and they came back with the answer that it's tough. But I think we need to raise the issue again. I would encourage a vote of Town Council on the record to say, please find a way to look at a crosswalk, even if it's at the expense of a parking space or two. Parking spaces represent money and income and the ability to get people to the business. But the counterbalance is lives. I would opt in the life safety. Period.
I wasn't implying, don't ask. I was just implying.
No, no, you're right. I was, and I didn't want to run over you. I was trying to say, you were telling the absolute truth. But I think it's important to say, figure it out. We got, we've got to get people across that road. We've got new businesses, expanding businesses, and more traffic by people. So let's, let's address and not ignore the issue.
All right. I think Ray made the motion.
Do we have? If you want, yes. I'll make a motion that, that staff approach county engineering staff about potential solutions to crosswalks and/or signage to assist the public in crossing North Main at Dalhall Boulevard intersection.
Second.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
And we might as well tell the businesses there, we're up to that. Let's, don't let them be surprised. And if they've got an opinion, say it. Because you take away people's parking places and somebody's going to jump up and down about that.
Yeah. And, and I know that in the meeting we had on Saturday, we talked about, we did not talk about the loss of parking places. But we talked about, amongst many topics over several hours, we talked about that, those traffic concerns. And we shared kind of what we perceive is going to come out of the Panoni study. So they are at least aware.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, you have anything else?
No, sir. I've said quite enough.
Phil, you got anything else? Chief? Joe?
No, sir.
Eva?
Yeah.
No. Any comments from the audience? All right. I'll bring her back to council. Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ray?
No, sir.
You too?
I do.
Okay.
I've had a couple people in town complain about parking tickets they've received for parking in places where they've parked for like ten years. Is there somebody new writing tickets? And I don't know if it's my place as a council member to even bring this up. But I don't know what to tell these people to do. I mean, one was parked on their own private property and the fellow writing the ticket said that there was a dumpster in the way. She took a picture and sent it to me and the dumpster was a hundred feet away. There was nothing around and it was on private property. Do these people have any recourse? Is there anything they can do? They're just frustrated and it's, it makes the town look bad. One was early in the morning with lady who's parked every morning in front of her business at five or six in the morning.
I got a similar call from the same folks, by the way, this morning. I called and I missed. But yeah, it's a concern that's going to be dealt with facing shortly.
We're not making any friends, not that we're looking for friends, but we don't need enemies over issues on people's own private property, for this one person anyway.
I think the one you have, but there are no parking signs there. They're parked right in front of them.
On which one? On the private property or on the other one? What's that?
One on Tower Street. I guess we got one for this one, the fruit.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no parking signs there. Making it impossible also for your trash trucks to get through there.
Let's do one issue at a time. I think they're not, they're not linked legally. So you, we've got a no parking sign on private property?
Correct.
Why would we do that? Do we have authority?
Oh, no, no, they're not ours. They're posted by the owner.
So the owner can enforce it if she wants to? I mean, isn't there a rule, let, let me back up. You know better than I do about us enforcing the law, parking rules on private property. What is the standard in that?
We can enforce the law where, where people, on private property where people, where the public can go. I'd, I'd have to look at specifically where the, they generally take a park, take a picture of the exact location of the thing. I'd like to get some case facts before I started then making opinions, Bert.
That's a fair answer. I get, I think I said the same thing earlier tonight. But, I mean, to me, our deputies, our, our police officers are, for example, going onto my law office and telling me I have parked over my own line. I can't imagine that.
But on Publix, let's go to Publix. So that's private property.
Correct.
The public has the right to go there.
Correct.
Now, your office would be where the public had the right to go maybe, but they didn't necessarily, it's not, it's a different thing. Different situation.
I thought that Publix had to ask us to enforce parking on their property.
Now, there's an attorney general opinion that says if there's, if they're open to the public, you're inviting the public, we have the right to enforce traffic laws and including.
Traffic or parking?
Both.
I'd like, I'd like to interject just because Alan's not here. But in this particular case, it was brought up at staff meeting this morning. This is not me. I'm relaying what I heard. This is an issue of them not being able to get to the dumpster to empty that dumpster was.
That's not the law, though.
I, I'm just telling you, that was, that was the issue. And, and Alan had the, the code brought up and, and I think they were concerned with that code. So the issue was brought up that they can't get to that dumpster to empty it because of vehicles.
And if the vehicle parks it, the dumpster picker-upper goes right on by and charges to come back, I think is the issue there.
I, I think we need to look at code because that's not necessarily the code that we read this morning.
Yeah, it's a little more in depth. And the other ones, I mean, there's parking signs that, yeah, we are strongly enforcing those, no parking. Some folks say, I've been parking there for ten years. Still doesn't make it right. If there's no parking sign, it's no parking.
Right. But then I drive through during the, the Cladium Festival and there's not a blade of green grass to be parked on.
We generally don't enforce during events.
So you let it go sometimes and not others?
In special events.
Criminal offense to.
Special events, we do not, we don't enforce the parking. That's in the ordinance as well.
So we enforce parking on private property?
As long as the public is invited as a thoroughfare, so to speak. Yes.
As a thoroughfare or parking? Mine versus Publix?
Yours is a little bit different. You're inviting a specific client to come to your office, not the general mass public to come into your office.
So is Linda Cruz, though. And the Cruz is like mine, not like Publix.
And the owner told her she could park there. But there's also, I mean, you, you guys can say, don't enforce it and I'll, I mean, it's an ordinance, so it's not a statute of. So if you say, don't enforce parking, then.
Maybe a little more discretion on, on the part of the officer, I would think. But if that's how it is, that's how it is and they'll have to.
And I think we do need to go back and revisit the code because in the sanitation code, there were some changes made.
Yeah, because we're, we're getting two things tied up. The issue is that the, the guys can't get to the dumpster. And I'm really just saying what Alan said. I have no input in this. I'm just trying to help the conversation. They'd made multiple contacts over the, the length of a year with the property owner, trying to figure something out. So there's an issue there that the guys can't properly get to the dumpster. And that's really what the town's trying to figure out.
Totally agree that that's a sep, that that's an issue, but I see it as a separate issue. For example, if they come to the, and I think they come two or three times a week in this instance, but in mine, I think it's once. That means don't park there one day a week. I know when the dumpster's going to be, trash pickup in my case. So if the owner wants to park there the other days, who cares?
I regret getting involved in this, but I'm just trying to relay what Alan said.
Separate issue.
And there was some language in the, the sanitation code that kind of addressed, so.
Yeah. I'd like to see what the specific issue in the parking place is because I, I don't want to encourage or frustrate enforcement of the dumpster because I know Alan has a recurring theme of being very frustrated over not being able to get to dumpsters. And I've told him, just leave them.
Yeah, I agree.
If you get to them, just leave them.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Yeah, that's not very nice either.
That's how it is. They'll have to police their own areas in that case.
I will tell you, in a few months, this will go away. Bill is getting ready to build two more buildings. And what he wants to do between the existing buildings and where the new buildings are going, he wants to leave an opening there big enough to where the trash truck come back in between them. And he's going to build two trash units. One for him and one for the Elks. And that will eliminate the need for the trash trucks to go behind the building.
Great.
So I don't know how far he is with his permitting and stuff. But that, that should take care of itself within a reasonable amount of time.
While it's on my mind, the south entrance into the, into the Publix shopping center that's directly west of the Wawa. I don't know what's happened there, but there's been no maintenance. It hasn't been mowed. Half the trees are dying. They're, it just looks like it's been abandoned. And.
We're, we're right now in the process of gathering some of those planning issues so that we can verify what is missing before we start initiating some of those letters. It's been brought up by another council member, especially with that Publix area.
I, I went through there yesterday and I was like, whoa, what in the world here? This is horrible.
Trucks can't make that radius. They can't make that turn.
Well, that's a, that's another issue as well, but just the median itself, there's, there's no irrigation. There's, it just dries a bone.
That was quite a to-do years ago between Barnett Bank and Publix. And I don't recall the outcome of who ended up with that access point.
It's, I believe Wawa owns right out into the, to the grass area. They own the whole entrance, I believe.
I think you're right. Not sure, but I think you're right.
Because we were going to go look to see who, who we needed to have a conversation with where they're bringing those trucks out and they're totally destroying that, that area with the, the roadway.
Just for confirmation on that, Wawa does own that?
State your name for the reference.
I'm Josh Code Enforcement, Lake Placid.
Okay.
I've got confirmation on that. Wawa does own that. That portion where the mouse is hovering right now, no one owns that as of property praisers wise. So I can't enforce anything on that. But with that median, I have contacted Wawa, the corporation, which they have talked with their maintenance. And I'm giving them until pretty much by next week. By next week is whenever I'll contact them as, again, as well as send them a notice of violation as they need to get that done. And I also contacted their ground crew that were actually there to see what they had planned. They were going to get with the maintenance as well to get that figured out as that's not part of their plan to do at that very moment when they show up. So it is a work in progress, so.
But it makes sense that it's Wawa's because with the repaving and all the money that Publix and the new shopping center, and that was the only thing that wasn't done, it kind of makes sense. If it's not theirs, they're not going to do it.
You asked, you asked if there was somebody new? This is our new code enforcement officer.
Welcome, Lake Placid.
He's essentially been more proactive in the last two weeks than what we've probably received in the last two years. So parking tickets being part of the code, he has been strongly enforcing the parking tickets as well. So he's your, he's your culprit there, but we're all involved in that. We're all.
I will sit down and look at that attorney general's opinion and let's see.
I know that I asked legal about, because at the other side, the town man wind up having to take maintenance of that, that area right through here. And when you look at it on the map, the way it comes up in, it looks like that this is the same kind of deal right here.
Where your.
And I was hoping that we don't have any liability, a responsibility.
That's a county road, so.
Where your, where your cursor is now is the holding pond for the county road. If you'll look, there's no green line along the county road there. That's just part of the road right away.
Neither is there on the other side, so. It's kind of the same.
I don't remember. I think that's a plat of four lots. And I don't remember whether that was dedicated to the city or county.
It was.
Okay.
Well, I, I trust your opinion. It just sure looks ugly right through there.
It looks, yeah, absolutely it does.
It's tearing the roadway up.
Well, it sounded like you've got that at least underway with Wawa?
Yes, sir. I've got that on the way, so. I will say in reference to Mr. Sapp's with the no parking and so forth, I will say I'm, I'm the one who wrote it. Reason being is because she is not the owner of the building. She's a tenant, which she rents from. And I made contact with the owner because I don't just write citations. I try to give someone the chance. Made contact with the owner and he stated that he will be switching those signs to permits. So a permit will be required. And we can enforce that as it is open to the public. It's right through there. Off Tower Street goes right into the American, or the Elks Lodge. So it's open to the public, so it can be enforced. And I believe chief does have a thing from the attorney general in reference to that as well.
That's, you're talking about one easement along the western side of the clone property. And where she parked, where Linda parked is not in that easement.
She's parked right, I have photographs if you would like to see them.
Sure I will, because I'll, I'll admit, I don't know where she parked.
Do you want me to show you them now or later?
Don't care.
Totally up to you.
That's the mayor's decision.
Mayor?
What's that?
Do you want to get into this tonight or do you want, Phil has asked to wait. Let's wait.
We, we can.
I'm going to side with Phil. Let's come back.
That's fine.
Yeah, he wants to see, he wants to see the pictures and everything.
That's fine. All my citations documented with photographs and so forth, so.
Let's get all these minds together and figure it out the right way. Okay. All right.
I'm good otherwise.
Okay. Charlie?
Good.
Okay. Well, if there's no other business that come before Town Council, meeting adjourned.